Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on November 5th, 2020 at 5:12 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to COVID-19 coronavirus, this meeting will be conducted live, video conference, or telephone call, at least a core of the board, or participating via live, video conference, or telephone conference in accordance with the provisions of Sections 551.125 or 551.127 of the Texas Government Code that has been suspended by order of the governor. All or some trustees and limited staff may be together while maintaining proper social distancing in room 301A in the Mackburn Professional Development Center. Due to ongoing safety concerns, all open meeting proceedings will be live broadcast, but members of the public will be limited in the Mackburn Professional Development Center pursuant to state guidelines and regulations, and all persons will be required to comply with state and district guidelines and regulations. Members of the public may access the meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. The Board of Trustees on November 5th, 2020, beginning at 5:08 will convene in closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071 through 551084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with Texas Openings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. We will reconvene in open meeting at approximately 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Vice President Hogg?
Yes, ma'am.
You initially called us to order at 5:12?
Sorry, let me amend that. I can't read the clock. We went into order at 5:07, and we're going into closed session at 5:08.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you for amending that. At this time, we're going into closed session. At this time, I'll reconvene in the open session, the meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for November 2020, beginning at 6:36 PM. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Choppin leading us in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones, electronic devices, and if you are online, please make sure you're muted if you are waiting to speak to the board. And now, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. I will be filling in for Ms. Masonite, who cannot be here, so no matter what, you're stuck with me. The first item on our agenda is our program presentation, our High School Student Month. It's a wonderful time for us to be able to celebrate still our amazing students in this district, and so for this month, Frankie will start letting them in on Zoom. I know they're on there. We get to celebrate our High School Student Month. This is a student we choose once a month, and it is a distinct honor from each of our high schools that's chosen. So it's a very small number that's honored and truly amazing students. This year, this month, for the month of November 2020, we have the distinct honor of honoring one of our new schools. I say new. Arlington College and Career High School, and our Student of the Month is Nehemiah Baxter. Dr. Boland, Ms. Baxter, I can't see you right now. I hear you. I can't see you.
Yeah, I'm here. I was trying to be let in.
Oh, there you are. You're behind me.
Hi. Yeah, I was trying to be let in on our other computers, but it just says, "Waiting as a guest." It wouldn't allow us to join in on the link that Dr. Boland sent, but all is well.
Well, perfect. You're both in. Dr. Boland, would you like to introduce Nehemiah? And welcome to our virtual meeting. Sorry we can't see you in person. We can see you up on the screen, so, Dr. Boland, please let me throw it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Members of the board and Superintendent Cavassos, thank you, first of all, for giving us this opportunity to recognize one of the many outstanding students in our district, and it's always a tough decision to select one student at ACCHS. We have so many students that are doing an outstanding job every day, but I would like to introduce the Arlington College and Career High School Student of the Month, Mr. Nehemiah Baxter. Nehemiah is currently a 10th grader at ACCHS, and he's a member of the inaugural class of 2023. Nehemiah has two younger siblings, and he attended Barnett Junior High before coming to ACCHS. In the future, Nehemiah would like to attend either Texas Tech University or Texas Westland University to pursue his possible career interests in mechanical engineering or music production. So this decision, like I said earlier, is always a challenge, and our teachers are the ones that decided on the Student of the Month, and here are a few of the things that Nehemiah's teachers had to say. Nehemiah is the epitome of what an early college high school student should be. He's on time to classes, participates in discussions, completes all of his assignments, and takes responsibility for his learning. His contagious positive attitude and engagement in class discussion motivates us to be better teachers, especially during the current challenges we are encountering with virtual instruction. Nehemiah collaborates well with all of his peers and is not afraid to be the one to ask questions to improve his own understanding. We're excited to see Nehemiah continue to grow as he progresses through each year at ACCHS, and we feel very fortunate to have him as a student at our campus. And speaking as his principal, Nehemiah has grown a lot over the last two years, and it's been a privilege to see him overcome the hard times because it always hasn't been easy for him, but he's persevered, and I know he has a bright future ahead of him. So congratulations to you, Nehemiah. We're all really proud of you, and is there anybody that you would like to thank, or anything you would like to say about ACCHS and its impact on you as a student?
Thank you, Mr. Boland. I know one person that I know I can thank the most is you, Mr. Boland, because I know that if it wasn't for you, I wouldn't be in this college. I wouldn't be, you know, trying as hard as I can now if it weren't for your motivation to keep me going. I know when I was in middle school, you know, getting this school helped me realize that I can do more, and so what comes with this school, I think that I can try my best and do my best, too. I also thank my path teacher and all of my teachers. I'm very thankful that they chose me.
All right. Thank you, Nehemiah. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, Nehemiah, congratulations. Would you like to introduce some people in the back of your video screen that are extensively excited and filming, and that's what they should be celebrating? Would you like to introduce them, Nehemiah?
This is my mom. This is my dad.
Hi, Mom.
You're one of my biggest support students.
Hi, Arlington ISD school board. We thank you guys for all that y'all do for our students across the district. Dr. Boland, we love you. We thank you for staying strict on all the students, including Nehemiah. We want to give a special shout out to Ms. Cunningham as well. She's also helped us get through a lot of stuff. And, Dr. Boland, you're amazing. We thank you for the program that you put in place. We thank all the school boards, members, for, you know, working with us through this pandemic, and we're just really grateful that Nehemiah has this opportunity, and we'll stay on him and motivate him and support him.
Nehemiah, I want her to come speak every time at every student. She is amazing, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and, Dr. Boland, thank you, and I think she said it exactly right. Thank you for the innovation as you helped start our very first early college high school, and I think I can speak on behalf of the board, some of the most amazing stories we've heard are from our early college high school students. And Nehemiah, it's a game changer. It's a game changer, and not only at this current time, but from some folks up here that are getting a little older, and I think those in the back can tell you, it is a game changer for the rest of your life, what you're doing right now. And you're not only making a game changer, you are excelling as the Student of the Month from your school. So that isn't even just a icing on top of the cake right there. That's truly amazing. We can't be more proud of you. I get chills when I talk to our collegiate high school students, when I hear some of their stories and what they're doing, and Dr. Boland said it right, perseverance is the key, and obviously you're persevering, and I can see your cheering squad behind you, which we all need people cheering us on, helping us persevere and excelling. So Nehemiah, congratulations. I'm sorry we don't have you here in person, because we would love to give you a plaque. We'd like to honor you. We'd like to take a lot of pictures with you, but we don't have you here in person, but we will be sending you a plaque. We'll also be sending you our ASD official board pens that we'll give to you, and we are so proud of you, and whenever we can, we'd love to see you and say hello, but thank you for all you've done, and, Dr. Boland, thank you for all you've done at the College and Career High School, as you see the Titans behind you, which I love your virtual background. So thank you so much, and thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
Okay, I want her to come to every one of our board meetings, every time. I want her to introduce everything we're doing constantly the whole time. I need her to motivate me.
Well, I just might apply.
All right. I want her to motivate me sometimes. Look at that. I love that right there. We do have to move on, even though I'd like to allocate just an hour for that. We do have to move on to our next part of our agenda. Next, we'll move to administrative appointments. Dr. Cavassos, we don't have any administrative appointments, correct?
We do not.
Thank you. Now, we come to our open forum for agenda items. We do have one speaker tonight. As stated on the post-agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register by sending an email to Superintendent of Schools no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters besides the one to address the board regarding agenda items?
Vice President Hogg, we have one registered speaker, Ms. Sunny Camfield, but she is not currently on call.
Okay. And we will, if, team in the back, if you do hear, if Ms. Camfield gets on, please let me know. We will always try and honor and give them an option to speak to do that. So, Ms. Camfield, if you're listening, please use the information you sent Ms. Benjamin and try and call in. We will try and work you in later in the agenda. Next, we'll move to action item for agenda items.
Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead, Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg, and so tonight, we bring the action item to hold open forums for our East Arlington Boundary Master Plan that impacts Berry, Crow, Johns, Rankin, and Thornton Elementary Schools, and so this is part of our 2019 bond, and it's really an exciting project with rebuilding schools in this area. But with that comes some boundary changes to make sure we accommodate everyone, and at this time, I'll ask Dr. Hill to take us through the boundary process and what we would like the board to consider when we go have our open forums to ask the public about the boundaries. So, Dr. Hill?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, again, Vice President Hogg, and members of the board here, again, to just go through the process of where we are at this point regarding the boundary change process. If you'll recall, at our last board meeting, we gave you a timeline of kind of where we were, and again, as the process throughout, hopefully the final recommendation. As Dr. Cavassos mentioned, this is a part of the 2019 bond, which will be closing Knox and Roark Elementary and rebuilding Thornton and Berry Elementary. As a result of all of that, there will be boundary changes for those impacted schools, Berry, Blanton, Crow, Johns, Rankin, and Thornton. Here's the big timeline again. We started in earnest prior to COVID shutdown back in March, but where we are tonight is at the end of February 5th, where we're presenting you the draft boundaries, and we've gone through the couple of boundary committee meetings with our principals and their teams, and Rocky Gardner from Templeton Demographics to kind of help us through that process. I do want to just take a little time to just put these names in here. I know it doesn't mean a lot to a lot of people, but this boundary committee has really put a lot of time and effort and a lot of passion into the two meetings that we had. So I just wanted to recognize the principal leaders and the parents of those communities for their work and their commitment to making sure that this process, that their voice was heard and understood, and that we addressed those concerns, and so they are to be commended for that work. As we went through that process, we looked at building capacity for all of the campuses. We looked at trying to balance the student population, and there was a lot of conversation about student safety, and so those were the kind of the barriers or parameters or considerations that we really focused on throughout the process. We, I'm sorry, I'll take it right here and just let Rocky Gardner from Templeton Demographics kind of walk us through what he presented to us, and then, Rocky, you can just kind of share some of your thoughts. So, Rocky, take it.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Hill, and members of the board. Dr. Cavassos, it's a pleasure to be with you all tonight. I'm sorry I can't be there in person. I, it's kind of funny, I was reminiscing. This is like full circle for me. I think my first project with Arlington ISD was when we drew boundaries for Anderson Elementary Schools, so here we go again. What I want to, first, I just want you to take a look at the map and understand what the map shows. The red lines on this map represent existing elementary school boundaries. The colors that you see are the boundary changes that we're discussing tonight. The blue triangles represent apartments, apartment complexes, so just to give you that idea. And the other thing we need to understand is, there's a lot of transfers that happen within Arlington ISD. We can't draw boundaries, we don't know without just using where students live. So all the boundaries that we made trying to balance enrollment was all based on where students reside and making the assumption that those students will assume the school in the attendance zone where they reside. So just a quick picture here of Plan One, and, you know, and I can tell you, our team came around, you know, we played with a lot of different options because we knew we wanted to find the most efficient changes that we could. Plan One, it represents more of what I'd call more of a horizontal view. We've got Knox going to a little bit of Thornton, a little bit of Berry, and a little bit of Crow, and then we've got Roark. All of Berry going to Roark, and you won't really see that change. Berry, I think I went backwards, all of Roark going to Berry. So you won't see that change. That part of the map won't change between Plan One and Plan Two, but this is the first plan we came up with. It's a more horizontal look. If we go to the second map, option two, there you go. I like, this is a really clean map. Now, you see that, you know, we still have, it's more vertical, so it's more up and down. You can see that there, and the left side of the map is almost identical. It's no different in Plan One and Plan Two, so what we're going on there on the left side with Blanton is not changed. Now, we did have some concerns. We know when we met with the committee, and this is what Plan Three represents, the committee was a little bit concerned about the crossing of, I think it was Collins to Blanton. So students that are currently zoned to, you know, to Roark, crossing Collins to get to Blanton. So we kind of made a change. We moved those students, and you can see the yellow there. We moved those students so they could attend Crow. It's actually a closer campus, so it was a great suggestion, and that often happens when we get in a group setting, when people just kind of see stuff that we're trying to balance numbers. We're just trying to make things work. This was the plan that we came around to. It's exactly the same as Plan Two with the exception of that move right there, and capacities look great. All capacities remain, there you go, below 100%. There's not a lot of movement right now in this part. This was based on, we had to begin this process so early that this was actually based on 1920 student numbers. We're currently mapping your 2021 student numbers, but really, I feel like because of the changes in the COVID impacts, 1920 is probably more representative of what we're going to see at these schools than really what a 2021 number will see, because I do think we're going to see a little bit of bounce back in 2020. I think that, yeah, that's where I'm at. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to.
So at this point, and thank you, Rocky, we'll hang around for some questions that would like to come, but at this point, administration recommends that the board approve the community forums so that we can present these boundary change options to the greater community of these impacted schools and kind of gather some feedback and thoughts from them. So we recommend Option Three from the committee and the parents and administration. Our next steps would be to, if approved tonight, we would hold open forums, most likely virtual, starting in the frame of 9th through the 13th, and we'll hold as many as necessary for all of the impacted campuses. The principals will work on that. We'll have some in straight English and some in Spanish to be more accommodating for those communities. We'll likely come back on the 16th through the 20th with the boundary committee again and take all of the feedback that we get from those open forums and see if it informs our work any more or any less, or just kind of see what that feedback presents to us. And then ultimately, we would bring this back to the board at the December 10th meeting with the recommendation for the approval of these boundaries, and they will become effective in August of 2021, and then again, pending board approval of those boundaries, we would begin the parent notification process of the change of boundaries. So that's kind of the timeline and where we are now, and so at this point, we'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Hill, and Rocky, thank you for all your service. You know our boundaries better than anyone else, and, Dr. Hill, thank you for always taking on this never-easy challenge from what we're having. At this time, are there any questions for my colleagues? Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. On numbers for Plan Three, am I correct in thinking that Berry and Rankin are the big winners as far as adding the larger number of students? Berry would, I think, like 340, and Rankin 260, where the others are, you know, taking smaller simulations. I can understand where Berry, since we're building a new one, could be adjusted for, you know, needing 14 more classrooms or so. What's the plan for Rankin?
As far as, let me make sure.
Yeah, being able to accommodate, you know, 260 more kiddos.
And so that's one of the things that we look at, Ms. Walton, as we go through this process, we look at what the current building capacity is and what the current enrollment is, and that's that, I think it's at 80 or 89, I'm not looking at it right now, but 89, I think, percent occupancy or utilization, and so with those additional students, it still is well within what that building can accommodate.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to be reassured. I thought that's kind of what it was, but I appreciate you confirming that for me. I think that's all the questions I have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Any questions for my colleagues? Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. Will any of the students be grandfathered in if they're at a school and they want to stay there, either the individual students or a family?
You know, that's one of the things that, as we go through the boundary change process, we often deal with that request, and so we do have a process in place to address those that may want to do that. But in general, we would want the parents and the families to go to where the new boundaries are designed, but we do handle those one off in the event that they do show up.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Ms. Fowler, great question, because I usually ask that, because if you have an older brother or sibling, and they've all maybe gone through that school, and you want them to go through that same school, we have to have that reasoning and common-senseness to allow, and, Dr. Hill and Dr. Cavassos usually ask that every time. So I appreciate it, because there are reasons of why it makes sense, and you may have bought that house specifically in that area for those schools, so I appreciate that question. I also appreciate staff always being willing to do that. Mr. Wilbanks?
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Couple of quick questions. When looking at, my big concern when looking at these three plans was that area east of Collins for Blanton, and it just seemed like a long distance for those students up there when either Crow or Berry were much closer. So I commend the committee for coming up with their suggestion. Makes a lot of sense, but just kind of help me out here, I'm a little, how much further on the southern perimeter of the map, the existing boundary for Thornton or Johns, how much further down off the map do those go? Or is...
I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have that map in front of me, but it's not, it's not a long, it's not a long ways, if you will. I guess, I don't know the exact distance. I can get that, and we could make a map that zooms out.
I was just curious if any of my colleagues familiar with that area know how much further each of those southern borders of the Rankin, Johns, and Blanton go. One of my concerns, I think, Dr. Hill, is looking at Rankin, it's at 93.7 utilization with this plan, is that correct?
Yes, I think that's what I'm looking at. Yes, that's correct.
What are the demographic trends over the next five to 10 years, and would we, could that potentially be a problem going into the future, or do we expect it to be flat or decreasing there? Because once you go around 95%, I start to get worried.
I can speak to that a little bit. You know, this part of Arlington ISD has always been kind of regenerating itself, you know, just, there's not a lot of new product there. There's just a significant amount of apartments, and they do, the yields go up and down. It's a very mobile population, so it's, we've seen it go up and down, and the other thing in Arlington, again, like there's transfer, but the transfer patterns are hard to predict. So right now, we haven't seen any problem there. We don't anticipate it, you know, exceeding 100, you know, 100% or getting much bigger than what it is right now. I think it's going to see some swings, going to go up and down a little bit, just like all campuses do. Now, in some of these, there's opportunities because of your transfer. Now, this resides, this is based on the number of students that live in that area, but there could be many students that transfer out for whatever reason, and that can also provide capacity.
Yeah, I mean, right next door at Blanton, we're sitting in the low, what was the numbers for Blanton, 69.7. So I assume that has to do, I'm not real familiar with those two schools, so I assume that has to do with the different sizes of each of the facilities.
Yeah.
Plays a lot to do with that.
Yeah, so a couple of just context. In the 2019 bond, when we developed these programs and these new schools and consolidations, and where would students then, where do we have excess capacity? Let me make it real clear. That was all considered, because there is excess capacity. There has been at Knox, and Thornton, to some extent, Rankin is a good example of excess capacity, so this is also a big part of the efficiency of our district and rightsizing and having new facilities. So all of those things were examined, and I'll tell you that in some of these schools, the fluctuation has been in the downward trend, right? And so this gives us an opportunity, rightsize them, be efficient, and have new facilities for the kids there. So if you just kind of think back a little bit of these schools, now I'm going back, okay, 10, 12, 15 years. A new addition was at Blanton, a new addition at Rankin. You know, there were things added. Thornton was added, too, you know, a long time ago, but it's because the population had grown, had grown, had grown, and then we kind of settled down, and then it starts to level off again. Remember, Adams was built to relieve Johns, because that's how big Johns was at one point. Johns has kind of settled down as well. So there is room to be efficient and to use our capacity and have new product at that part of town. So it's a comprehensive plan. I guess the bigger answer is, we have been looking at this since the 19 bond development. As you know, you know, we've been kind of really focused on this area to rightsize it and make sure we're efficient in utilizing our buildings, but not, you know, overflowing and things like that.
Just looking at the geographic area for Blanton, I know it has to do with, you know, the population and the number, density of housing there, but also the facility, I guess. It looks like it's a target for maybe a specialized program or two.
Right.
Are we planning on expanding our full-day pre-K in that area, make that a larger center?
Yeah, so we currently have enough capacity for full-day pre-K even today, and with these changes, we'll still have enough capacity for full-day pre-K. This is a longer story here. Mr. Wilbanks said you're probably not asking this question, but at some point, universal pre-K is probably the next frontier for state legislature and us, and then that's when we'll examine, do we need more capacity, which I still think for some of that purpose, we would still have some capacity, because that's how we looked in 19 bond to make sure we were efficient. Now, to Rocky's point and Dr. Hill, this is looking at the 1920 enrollment, because if you look now with everybody's enrollment fluctuations, it wouldn't give you a good picture, so we're kind of looking at the peak of 1920 so that we can make sure we're making good decisions here. So what we may end up with next year is even a little less enrollment in that part of town, which will give you even more capacity in those buildings.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. And again, Mr. Hill and Rocky, I appreciate the work that went into this. And I agree with where we've ended up. It looks like a good map. Any other questions from colleagues? Mr. Chapa.
I do have a couple of questions about, I want to start with the chart that shows the numbers. And I am just going off of memory here, I don't have anything in front of me that shows the normal, the current percentage of economically disadvantaged students at each of these campuses. But from my memory, these numbers are lower than I remember. Is, was there a conscious effort in drawing the boundaries to try to level out? The numbers are witnessing a decline in the percentage of economically disadvantaged students in these neighborhoods.
You know, that's a good question, Mr. Chapa, and Rocky may speak to it a little bit. But I don't think we looked to, we didn't look to economically disadvantaged percentages to drive us. We looked at building capacity and what was really a natural boundary in student safety. The economically disadvantaged was just an opportunity for us to show, okay, here's what this does to us. And that potentially could tell us what additional resources may be necessary at a school based on this, whether we shifted from a school where it was higher and now we needed a different school. Or just really to give us the information about what additional resources may be needed based on that percentage.
Okay, but these numbers, so these number percentages of economically disadvantaged students are the same, I guess, or close to the same as they have been? I just feel like some of these campuses were substantially higher in the recent past.
Well, and one difference might be, again, we're using reside populations. And some numbers that you might see are, might be based on the total enrollment. So with transfers going in, you know, you could see, compare some of these, there could be some shifts in some of that economic disadvantage. But like Dr. Hill said, our team never uses that, or we're strictly trying to draw boundaries. We don't even see the economic disadvantaged numbers talk.
Okay. I'm going to look at the option three map. I do want, Dr. Hill, if you can, during the community forums on this or the feedback that you're going to go gather, I do understand that the community, there was some feedback that was supportive of the change of the neighborhood at Park Row and Collins that is very close to Blanton to send it to Crow out of a desire to not have students cross Collins. I would, I would feel better about that change or about this proposal. Or if this boundary is currently the way it is, if we could have some people from that community, that particular three-street neighborhood polled. Because I get a little concerned when I look at some of the, you know, sometimes we have a boundary and we have to make cuts, you know, decisions here or there. But, you know, right there at Carswell and Collins and some of those other streets, I mean, those houses are a block and a half from Blanton. And so I would just make sure that we, that neighborhood understands, you know, is comfortable with going to Crow, given that we have the opportunity to do a boundary change and would not prefer to be at Blanton. Because I, you know, as a parent, if I had the option to send my kid right across the street, even though it's Collins, there's a very large crosswalk right there at Blanton, you know, and right across the street from there, I'm familiar with that neighborhood. So I would want to poll those residents to make sure that they wouldn't prefer to be at Blanton because that's a substantial change in distance for them to go to Crow. I mean, the neighborhood is not huge. I mean, it's not an enormous burden to get to Crow, but Blanton is figurative, you know, literally, not figuratively, across the street from these folks. And so we'd want to make sure that that's something we check on.
Okay, Rocky, you want to, it looks like you want to respond to that. Because I think if you're talking in this southern piece right here, this is currently at Crow. It didn't change.
Yeah, and that's why, and I'm having a little trouble seeing, my screen's dim, so I had a hard time seeing the red line there. But given that we're going through this process, I would want to check with that neighborhood. I know that's, it sounds like historically, at least in the recent past, that neighborhood has been going to Crow. But if they would prefer to continue doing that or to go to Blanton, given how close they are to Blanton. And I know that would result in some changes elsewhere. But if they want to stay at Crow, people on those streets, then that's great. But if there's an opportunity and they would like to move, this might be a time to do that.
We can definitely give that feedback.
Okay.
And those are all the questions that I have. I am interested to see the final proposal. I know this is a very difficult process every time and we could, you know, slice and dice these different ways. And so, you know, I see a few other places that I might have questions about where there might be a closer option for a discrete, a couple of blocks. But I will save those for another time.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Any other questions from colleagues?
I'm just a little confused.
Ms. Walton?
I'm sorry. I thought Blanton was on the south side of Park Row. Am I misreading the map or that Mr. Chapa is talking about?
It is, Ms. Walton. It's further down Collins.
Right.
It's south of Park Row on Collins.
Right.
On the...
So if we're talking about that...
Western side of Collins.
So was Mr. Chapa talking about the northern section that's going to go from Blanton?
I think he's talking about the area right across the street.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I see what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Wilburn.
No, that's okay. That's why we do these. And, Mr. Dr. Hill, thank you for leading this. You know, listen, no matter what the process, there's someone who doesn't like it. And we know that and it's a challenge. Rocky and Dr. Hill, let me ask you just one question on this. I always worry about the students, first off, these boundaries, and I like option three, I was a little worried on option one and two. I think option three, I always say it, does it pass the eye test? Does it look reasonable? We're not the state legislature gerrymandering our districts. You know, what's, what looks reasonable like an area? So I think it does achieve those standards. Did we, do we take into account the amount of students that we would then be busing? So those that are two miles or farther out, plus also those ones from that one mile, you know, one and a half to two-mile mark. Listen, a mile and a half for an elementary student is a long ways to walk to and from school, and it can hurt our attendance on those. And, Dr. Hill and Rocky, do we take, do we take that into account of how many busing, how much we will maybe possibly have to increase on busing by these boundary changes?
Rocky, you want to take the first stab at that?
Well, yeah, when we were designing the boundaries themselves, we tried to find, get students as close as we could to the camps that they'd be attending. There are some areas where we, you know, like if you look at the students that were at Roark, that are in purple, they're in the north part of Blanton. Those students were traveling all the way. So we shortened their commute. But there's also some policies with the district, and we did have a transportation person, I think, on both meetings that were kind of, they could tell us, because if it's a hazardous route or not, they can add, they can do buses. So I don't think we created any transportation burdens with this plan, at least that I could see. You know, obviously, some routes are a little bit longer just simply because they're, we're closing campuses, you know, and it's just a bit distance from some of those campuses. But farther, but we did consider that as best we could.
And that's why we held the forums, the community forums. They will usually bring that up and have those discussions. So I just would ask that we make sure we do take into account, I think especially for our kiddos that are that mile and a half to even a mile to two-mile mark. That can be a rainy day, they may not show up. And I fully understand that if they're having to walk. I don't see any other questions. This is just a discussion action. And we will take some action if we have a motion, but then it will come back to us after community forums and we'll have another time to look at it and hear what the community had to say from this standpoint. At this time, I see Ms. Fowler over there. Ms. Fowler, please go ahead.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. I move to approve the community forums to present boundary change, option three, to the impacted communities to gather feedback from the greater community.
I have a motion by Ms. Fowler. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Dr. Reich. Any further discussion? At this time, please vote. Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Wilbanks?
I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Holly Walton, I vote yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Bowie Hogg, I vote yes. Motion is approved unanimously six oh. President Mays cannot be here tonight. We will now move on to action item B, consider approving resolution for real estate. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And this evening, we bring this resolution to acquire some real property and we ask for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. At this time, do we have discussion or a motion from my colleagues? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. If there's no discussion, at this time, I would move to authorize the purchase of lots 31A and 31B located at 1500 South Cooper Street in Arlington, Texas, and to approve and attach the proposed resolution authorizing the purchase to the minutes.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Thank you, Ms. Walton, for the second. Any further discussion? Outstanding that we're able to have the option to be able to buy this piece of property. Dr. Reich, please vote.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Wilbanks?
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Holly Walton, I vote yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Bowie Hogg, I vote yes. Motion passes unanimously six to zero. Next, we'll move on to discussion action item. Next will be considered schematic design for the Michael Glaspy Field Additions and Renovations Project. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And this evening, we bring this part of the 2019 bond as we're making good progress with our designs and rebuilding of schools. And so this is another 2019 bond project that we're ready for the board to consider schematic design on the stadium that will be located at Martin High School. And so this evening, we have the architects and we have staff that will present the schematic design. The board committee on this project has also had an opportunity to review and ask questions and things like that. So I'll turn it over to Kelly Horn.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Vice President Hogg, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, we're grateful for the opportunity to present tonight for your consideration and approval. The 2019 bond program, Phase One, Bit Package Ten, Project Two, Michael Glaspy Field Additions and Renovations Project. And so this particular field is located at the Martin High School site. And when we finish this project, the community there will realize a larger, more enhanced press box, locker rooms, restrooms, concessions, and site circulation around the site, as well as other improvements that we will make as a part of the 2019 bond program to the Martin High School project or facility. And so the board approved some time ago, BLK Architects as the architect for this particular project. Tonight, we have Jonathan Allis and Josh Sawyer here with us from BLK. They'll be presenting the project for us. And so this is the schematic design. Following presentation and assuming approval of this, then we will begin to develop the design documents, present those to the city for permitting, and then we will begin construction following the bidding process. This particular project would begin in the fall of 2021, assuming that all goes well through the permitting process, with a target for substantial completion in the fall of 2022. So with that said, I'll share my screen and allow Jonathan to begin presentation this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Kelly.
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
I'll warn everybody, my cleaning crew just arrived, so I'm trying to dance around what's going on in my office at the moment and avoiding the sounds of Seventh Street that are coming in my other window. So I will kick off briefly and then Josh will walk you through some more details, try to be respectful of your time. I'll move fairly quickly, but at any point if you have a question, please feel free to just jump in and let me know. This first image, and Josh will go through more of the imagery with you, kind of about site layout, but this gives you the concept that Kelly was just speaking about, the new Glaspy Field. At the top of the image, you see the home seating and the press box. You'll see down on the opposite side of the field, obviously, the visitors. And then you'll see four buildings built around the site that are restroom and concession buildings, and Josh will walk you through that. But this is, the bulk of the work of the stadium is really these elements, the bleachers, the press box, and some driveways that we'll walk you through. So there's a lot to look at on the site plan, and I'll tell you upfront, yes, this is rotated. North is actually to the right on this image. So if I slip up and say north, don't look for it to be up, it's actually to the right. It's such a linear image that we have to do that so you can kind of see it all. So let me start kind of at the left side of your image and work your way across just to talk about general scope. I'll talk about parking in a moment, but as you may or may not know, we've laid out for you the existing parking that is at Martin High School. With stadiums, parking always becomes an issue, or at least it becomes a discussion point, so we wanted to break that out for you and just say, it'll show you a little better on the site diagram. But we are anticipating using the western parking lot, which is at the top of your image, as home parking. And the eastern parking lot on the eastern side of Martin and the southern side, which are on the bottom of your image, is your visitor parking in the future. This stadium has a little bit different approach than most in that we are constrained against our western border. And so some of our visitors or spectators will arrive at the ends of the field, specifically the southern end of the field. So the visitors would enter from that southeast corner that Kelly's indicating, and home would be entering from the southwest corner. And we are, as I move across that image, you'll start to see a drive aisle, as Kelly alluded to, parking circulation around the site. That doesn't exist right now. That's there for a few purposes. Mainly for us, it's bus loading and unloading. It's also there for emergency access. What it is not there for is to become the new cut-through between Pleasant Ridge and Mayfield in the future. So you'll see in Josh's images, while that's used on game night for very logistical issues of loading and unloading, things like that, is it intended to be either gated or bollards used so that it's closed off at any other time? It's really only for emergency access and functional use on game night so that we avoid that traffic circulation. We don't want to encourage around the facility. As we go a little bit further past Kelly's cursor there, just below that drive aisle is the existing baseball field, as you know. If you're familiar with the site, there's actually two existing softball fields on the north side of that drive. Part of the scope of this project, though, is to take one of those fields. As we move our field events out of the current field area, those will be in a location just north or just on this image, just above the baseball field. So that's, that's long jump, pole vault pit runways, basically. And also build a competition softball field or at least a competition level softball field on this site with limited bleachers, a small press box. So we have a softball field on site as a part of the scope also. And then at the far, what will be the northern end of the right side of your image, we're proposing a small parking area. This is designed to be really more of a support on game night parking area. Before I get into the parking diagram, I'll just say, part of our goal is to make sure that we are not adding more traffic on the Mayfield Road by adding seats at this stadium. If you know, Mayfield is really just a two-lane undivided asphalt road. So the last thing we would want is to introduce game night traffic back there. So this parking lot is really designed, you'll see it in the traffic flow diagram, to take our game night buses for students who are traveling here, both athletes and band students. And also, we have to keep in mind, this is a home field for two schools. So there will be nights where Martin will be, a band student at Martin will be getting on a bus here and driving to another game somewhere else. Normally, their car would stay in the parking lot, and as I just told you, those student parking lots to the south, we intend to use for spectator parking. So the thought is that those students could move their cars into this northern lot so they are out of the way of the traffic. Plus, they may be arriving at a different time and that allows us to separate traffic. So while there'll be some vehicle traffic, it's very limited. Perhaps game officials, scouts, media, potentially as well, but we are introducing some other reserved parking that I'll show you in the next image. Last thing I'll note on here is just parking count. Already existing on the site is a little over 1,600 spots. And just by means of comparison, at Wyoming and Cravens, you're at 1,300 and a little less than 1,100. So the Martin site already has a tremendous amount of parking, and that's before we add the parking lot to that, to the far right of your image. We're still not sure how big that is, but it's, let's say it's probably 100 spots in addition to bus parking. That may scale down a little bit. As Kelly said, this is schematic, so we may make some changes there. But we think that's a large amount of parking for this. Of course, we'll have to have that conversation with the city as we move through the process and specifically on this site, the plan development process that we'll have to go through with the city. This diagram takes a little bit of explaining, so let me walk you through it. It's important mainly because stadium circulation and flow is critical, particularly on a Friday night at about 10:00. night at about ten o'clock. It's not the loading, it's the unloading. So just a simple key explanation, as we've laid it out, the, kind of the size of the line weight tells you kind of the amount of traffic we anticipate. So red is simply normal vehicular traffic. And like I just said, we really intend for everything, all of our spectators, to arrive on Pleasant Ridge or on Woodside Drive. That's the road to our east, kind of at the bottom of this image. As I said, visitors would move up to that lot that's at the top of your, or sorry, home would be at the lot at the top of your image, and visitors would be at the lots at the bottom of your image. And we're, we are constructing and designing kind of pedestrian plaza walkways that would make it very clear where the visitor entry would be. You're seeing that where Kelly's cursor is. And the home entry also, kind of at that corner as well. Remember, I said we need to enter just about everybody through this southern edge of the site. There is still room for people to circulate up that driveway I talked about, and that's one reason we don't want to allow vehicular traffic during the game on that aisle that drives around the back of the stadium. We really want to treat that as a pedestrian plaza, so people could still move around at that far western side of the site. Just to walk you through buses for one moment, I mentioned this a little bit, but we will have obviously visitor buses arriving every night. We still would like to not have the bulk of them on Mayfield, although we can use that. The thought is that as buses arrive, they come on Pleasant Ridge, and they move up to the student parking lot, and they use that loop around, as I explained to you, to essentially pull up, and as Josh will show you, there's one dressing area on the south end of the field and one on the north end of the field. The bus will pull up to the visitors' dressing area. They can discharge immediately there, and then the bus essentially circulates back and moves to that back parking lot I just told you about that we're creating at the far north end. Same thing with the students, they have a little bit different approach, visitors being on the lower side of this image. That band bus would essentially come around, unload along that edge, and then they can circle around the MAC building on that existing fire lane, go back up and again park in the parking lot. And they have a, they have a specific interest with band students, as Fine Arts reminded us of, is as halftime is over, they typically like to bring the bus up and start loading their larger props back in. By having all this closed off just for that traffic, that allows the band members and the band, really, it's the band supporters, the parents, to get those buses loaded and ready to move back out as quickly as they can to avoid game day traffic. So they may be exiting back on Mayfield after the game to stay out of the pedestrian traffic and the vehicular traffic. I think this represents a very good separation between the visitors who, visitors and home who are coming to be spectators, and the more operational side of the game. Along our new drive aisle, we'll have some reserved spaces, and most of that would primarily be, as I said, for referees, possibly scouts, and others who'd be coming to the press box. The entry to that area is kind of at the top of the image there. You'll see it's the VIP slash scouts gate, which is a separate entrance, which allows that to be completely separated and shielded from coming through the main entrances. We have allowed in the site plan, two areas for band march-in. Fine Arts was keen on that. And so both at the north and the south end, there are plazas wide enough for the bands to march in and go into their seating in those areas. So in a way, this is a direct response to what Fine Arts has asked us to provide for them, and I think it works very well. I think, Josh, this turns into a little more detail.
Yeah, thank you, Jonathan. This is the image that was shown at the beginning of the presentation. They kind of gave you the bird's eye view of the campus, the field itself, as well as all the buildings around. We can move forward, Kelly. If we, as we dive a little deeper into the stadium itself and take a look at the buildings around it, Jonathan really pointed out, I think, the majority of the major elements that we'll be showing. The home entry being on the northeast of this site, or the image here, I'm sorry, northwest, and then the visitor side on the southwest there, with all of the buildings situated around it. I think this will give you a better picture of what's going on with some of the entrance and exit out of the site, your band march-in to the south and possibly available to the north. Emergency access as well, right there where Kelly's showing, for emergency vehicles to the field. Really, when we look at the overall stadium complex, the desire is to really try to find a traffic flow that works for everybody coming in and out, and that's from spectators to student athletes, to coaches, to officiating crew, student training staff, all those different folks that are going to be coming in and out of the site. And with all of the major traffic coming from the south or the left side of this image, the pedestrian traffic along the drives and along the top and the bottom will help facilitate those entrances in and out of the facility without mixing different groups of people. In general, real quick on this too, is the seating. What we're looking at, these are all still very preliminary numbers we're working through with the bleacher manufacturer, so these numbers will fluctuate, but the idea is to maintain a count of ten thousand seats in the stadium, fifty-five hundred on the home side, and forty-six hundred on the visitor's side, or forty-five hundred on the visitor's side, is really what we're shooting for. Forty-five hundred will allow us to host playoff games or allow the district to possibly host playoff games into the future. And fifty-five allows for the largest amount of mix that we can get, particularly on the north side of the, or I'm sorry, on the north side of this image, but the west side of this, of the site. The overall design and layout of the bleachers and the seating is situated with the amount of space that we have available between the existing field itself and the property line that runs to the west, that are the north of this image. As you can see here more in detail, there's a number of things happening with that. The area that Kelly is floating over right now is a landscape buffer, and that is intended to help not only transition the hill that occurs on that side of the site, but as well as provide some landscape buffer for light and sound visuals to the neighborhood that's behind. The fire lane is what's required to, by the city, in order to get access to the press box and things around this, as well as the things that Jonathan mentioned as far as access and drop-off for different people. We're also looking at that as the main pedestrian access as well, that split the incoming spectators to go, be able to go to the north gate as well, so that everybody's not coming in at the south gate located there. So once you get all these elements in, and then you leave the track and field where it's at, the bleacher is a little bit skinnier than what you would typically see in a stadium, and thus the reason for the more wide breadth of seating that we're looking at here. Typical football field typically in a high school environment wants to run from the twenties to the twenties, and then possibly all the way to the back of the end zone. We're a little bit beyond that due to those constraints that we're working with, but we've been working very hard to try to develop a scheme and a design that allows for maximum amount of seats as required, as well as maintain the best views that we can on the site. And so that will actually translate into some unique opportunities with the interaction of the press box and the seats themselves, particularly at the center part of the field, and then how those seats will kind of form around the stadium as we go. As we dive a little bit deeper into the site, I won't spend too much time on this other than just to highlight the features of each one of these buildings. On the left-hand side of the screen here is the home entry, so that's going to include your tickets, your concessions, your main entry for the home side. Additionally, there is a bank of toilets and restrooms designed in this portion in between, so you're splitting really your traffic for home into the north and south, and that would be for restroom facilities as well as concessions. Medially adjacent to that is the visitors' fieldhouse, and there's really two fieldhouses on the site, one on this location and then one on the other side. It is labeled the visitors' fieldhouse, and some discussions that we had amongst the committee about which one should be home and away, even though this is the home entry, we felt like this was the best option for visitors to come in and out of the site and allow the home to be on the other side, has a better loading area for the incoming team being Segin or for Martin to be able to come over from the MAC and have a more direct access to that fieldhouse. So that's the reason for the visitors' fieldhouse on this other end. There's some ancillary pieces that are part of that locker space and all the different functions that need to occur for game time, as well as storage, and the different elements that would occur for all the sports that will be taking place at this facility. Up to the right-hand side is going to be the north gate for the visitors, it's a much, or sorry, for the home. It is a much smaller building, but again, it's about splitting that traffic either direction, as well as providing another entry point for folks to come in into the site. So that's got a small ticket booth as well, concession space, and then area for restrooms, again, trying to split those two different areas. To the south of the site, we've got two buildings as well. The visitor's side over here on the left would be the entry, same elements, ticketing, concessions, restrooms, located there along that main entry. And then off to the right-hand side is going to be the visitor's secondary entry, ticketing, security, concessions, as well as the restrooms in addition to the home fieldhouse. So this would be all the different pieces associated with that home side, and in addition to officials, locker rooms, and other things that would be needed for game time. So as we roll into the design, we're going to show you a few images and kind of run through what the overall design is. This is the approach from the home side parking, so the west side of campus, coming into the stadium itself on the south side. As you can see here, the entry includes that fire lane or that fire access, the bollards, or some ability to block off that for vehicular traffic, but also open it up when necessary. Really trying to expand the reception of this area, knowing the number of people that will be coming into this part of the site to come in. You're seeing the main building there on your right-hand side in the background, so that would be your tickets, and then the main entry gate where the Glasby Field signage is located, and then the stadium and the seating located behind it with the press box in the far back. One of the things that this design tries to accomplish is, one, not only tying into some of the architecture and design of the existing Martin High School, but also providing an opportunity to customize the site for the teams that will be coming in. Obviously, with Segin being this home sta, their home stadium as well, that's one thing, but additionally, if any other campuses were going to be coming to the stadium, the ability to transform the stadium to make it feel like it's theirs. When you're Segin coming to campus, you want to feel like this is your high school, even though it's at Martin. And we'll be able to accomplish that through a number of signage packages. We'll be looking at lighting, we'll be looking at technology and digital displays that, once you arrive to the site, it will feel like it's Segin High School or any other high school that may be using this facility. This gives you an idea of what it could look like at night, transforming that to a nighttime opportunity, the white lighting showing, the generic lighting that would be used, and again, the opportunity to change colors through that. And some of the other images that we have start to show how that could possibly work. This is a look across the field, so we've come into the visitors' entry, and we've gone through the gate, and we're sitting alongside the field here, and we're looking across at the home side. So as you can see, was we were talking about with the bleachers, it's a very linear design. It doesn't go very high. We're not afforded the opportunity to go very high because of the constraints that we're dealing with on that side of the stadium. But we do provide a great opportunity to create a very intimate stadium, the ability to wrap the field itself in these stands and spectators. It'll be a very unique environment for people to not only watch a game, but also play a game with the press box there in the center. One of the unique things with the press box is it's actually engaging with the seating versus being behind it. And again, this is all strategies to help maximize the number of seats that we can get into the area, as well as providing the best opportunity for views and access to those areas. It's a two-story press box, primarily two main floors with the film deck up on top, and we'll go a little bit deeper into what that looks like here in just a second. These are those plans of the press box, really two main floors. The first floor, which is going to be the floor plan there in the middle, is going to have all of your game day, game operations, coaches, visitors' radio, production pieces that would occur there. Really, the press box is designed to create separation between what we would call the game time operations, the folks that are running the game, participating in the game, and the second floor, which would be more of your hospitality area or your guest suites. Up on the second floor, in the center, we have our main hospitality suite there, and then flanked on either side of that is going to be your scouts and media on one end for your visitors coming in to see student athletes, as well as a game time administration suite that can double up as a guest suite as well. So in the event the two high schools within the district are playing, you have an opportunity to split that hospitality suite into two options. Down below that, which is also a very unique opportunity for this press box, is the ability, again, to engage with those seating areas. As we look at the seating, the main portion right there in the middle is designed to take a reserved section, so there's some opportunity there to do some different ticket sales for booster, as well as provide a different game time experience for some spectators who would like that. As you go up from the stands, you'll enter in what's called a reserved deck, which actually connects to the press box. This is required for ingress and exiting out of the press box, but it also creates a great opportunity for secondary viewing. So this would be for anybody who wants to get up and stretch their legs, have more of a standing kind of area to watch the game, in addition to things like filming. A lot of parents, particularly in band and cheerleading, drill team, want to be able to film their child during the halftime show, and this would be a great opportunity to be able to go up there and set up your own camera and be able to videotape those activities in an unobstructed part of the stadium with a great vantage point. Up on the top floor additionally is the film deck, sorry, Kelly. The upper floor above all of this is the film deck, so there's access up to that area, and this will be where the major filming will be occurring for the sports there with the covered area adjacent to that. This gives you an idea of kind of a section cut. So if we were to slice right through the middle of the field and take a look at what's going on, this gives you an idea of how that architecture is coming together. You can see the bleachers sitting there. All of the concourse area, the walking area, will be occurring underneath the bleachers, and then coming up into the stadium through a series of ammatories or ramps that will get you into the seating. The seating will be a split-level design that'll allow for some lower-level seating for more close-up. Oftentimes, students sit in these areas, this is usually rowdy crowds, trying to get everybody excited and hyped in the game, and then the upper seating back behind that. But that helps with traffic flow, as well as just providing different vantage points for a game to be viewed. You can see that interaction with the press box here, the reserve deck, as well as the other two floors sitting above, in addition to the film deck up there on top. And then you can see what's going on behind the stadium with the fire lane and the landscape buffer in the area that's adjacent to that. And then just a couple more views from within the stadium. This is a view from that reserve deck, again, a great opportunity to be able to go up and see things from a different vantage point. And again, just an opportunity created by the way that we've been able to engage the press box, or needed to engage the press box with the overall design of the stadium. And then what can this thing look like at night as it pertains to other schools coming in? You know, through the lighting and through the architecture itself, this representative Segin was playing a home game at night. There's the ability to take some of the lighting elements and change those, whether it be blue for Segin, or orange for Bowie, or green for Arlington High, whatever have you. Who's playing here, we can do that. And that's greatly accomplished through the technology that's occurring on lighting and the things that we can provide architecturally to help make the stadium feel like home for anybody who may be playing there. That's it.
Thank you, Josh, and I'll exit this for a brief minute. Okay. Thank you, Josh and Jonathan, for that. And so at this point, administration recommends approval of the schematic design for Michael Glasby Field Additions and Renovations Project, and we would be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for all the hard work. As part of the committee that reviewed this, we asked lots of questions before, and I'm sure we'll have some for our colleagues tonight. Let me look around and see which questions I have from colleagues over this. Dr. Rush.
Thank you, VP Hogg, and thank you for the presentation. It is a very nice-looking facility, very functional, and certainly an enhancement. Makes me excited to see what will come for our existing fields that we're renovating as well. Just a couple of minor questions. One, and maybe we can pull up the presentation that would show the ticket, the ticket space, our ticket windows. I had a question on the elevation and the capacity there.
Is this the one you're thinking of, Dr. Rush?
No, the one that specifically shows the ticket windows on it.
The front-facing, Dr. Rush? Like looking at a ticket window, is that what you're asking?
Yep.
Okay, let me see if I can. This is during the day. Do you mean the actual floor plan diagram? Is that what you're thinking?
Kelly, I think it'd be the slide where it shows like the front-looking view, looking at a ticket window that says like, the one that says Glasby Field.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go. One of those.
I believe, Spence, do you have that one as well?
So my, my main question on that...
So my, my main question on that, given the volume that we have all seen at our ticket windows, it seems like there's a change in the elevation there. I don't get a full sense of what that, that physical distance is from the window to that change of elevation. It seems like it's kind of short. Is that, is that enough to handle our big long lines that we usually have?
I'll try to go to a little bit of a bird's eye view or look down onto that if I can. Let me, pardon me, just a moment. I believe that's closer to the front. And then Josh, you might be able to tell us the depth of that or approximate depth of that ticket deck there.
I can't tell you the exact dimension, but I can tell you it is, it is rather large. There is an elevation change. It is subtle as you all are aware. The grading particularly around this portion of the site can be pretty significant from the existing high school. So that grade change does exist, but the plaza that's available in that area is rather decent size. I can't give you an exact count, but it would be somewhere, I would say estimate probably 40 feet deep, if not 60 or 50 feet, 50 or 60 feet wide. So it's a pretty sizable area.
Given that our fire lanes are typically 24 feet across, if this is a standard width fire lane, you can see that's probably, like Josh said, that's probably closer to 35 to 40 feet across there and then considerably longer or wider across here.
Okay.
Then, and Dr. Rush, also, not only do we have a ticket entrance here, but we have a large ticket entrance here on the north end of the field for home as well. And then like we mentioned, we have split ticket entrances for the visitor here in this plaza on the southeast side and then on the northeast side as well.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, I appreciate that. And then on the seating specifically for handicap or just accessible seating, what does that actually look like? And I'm thinking of what our current seating arrangements are in our bleachers. And I would assume that we have more accessibility with this design, but if you could just talk to that just a little bit.
Yes, so the ADA seating is actually, will be meeting code and it will be more than you have in your existing facilities. Those exact counts are being worked out right now. I want to say that on the 5,500 home side, there would be 40 spots for ADA seating. And that would be distributed, really the unique opportunity here is we can also distribute that ADA seating. We are looking at how that seating can be provided along the main concourse that splits the lower seating and the upper seating. But additionally, some of the ADA seating that can be provided up on that reserve deck as well. So distributing vantage points, which is something of bonus with ADA seating that it's not all in one location, is something this design actually provides.
That's great. That's great, yeah. Because having as much equity built into this design as possible, that's, that's great to hear. The last question at this point that I have is the, under the bleacher, the areas where people will be able to walk. So two, two questions related to that. And maybe that split stadium view that you had where we could look under the bleachers? That might help wrap my question towards you a little bit. Yeah, that one, that's good. So, two things. One, the seating decks themselves will be solid, correct? So that any kind of trash or anything isn't going to fall down below, right? Okay. And then two, how far under are people able to stand before it gets too short? And is there any thought to that area where it is too short to actually walk? That seems like it's a dead space, maybe a security risk or some, some type of consideration. So if you could explain that a little bit to me.
Typically, you'll treat, as Josh mentioned, there'll be vomitories to go up. And so it's not atypical to use ceiling fencing or just fencing to funnel people to those areas and then keep them out from under the areas you're referring to. There's not a lot of reason in this design for people to be up underneath the bleachers. There'll be some maintenance need over time. So typically, we'd bring a row of fencing back underneath the bleachers as well. Kind of people really through one column base spacing and then up to the vomitories and then simply close the other areas off so that there's, there's no access underneath there. Because as you mentioned, it's closed off. There's really not a reason for a spectator to need to get underneath that lower portion.
Okay. That's great. And I, I think what you said is, is right, that there's no needed business under there. But then when you take maybe some creative students into the equation, we have to look at blocking that a little bit. Okay. A great design. I know that there was a lot of work that went into this, a lot of pre-planning and prep with our athletics departments. And so I feel very comfortable as far as the capacity, capacity in general for this, that it meets all of the needs that have currently been lacking in what we had available to us within the district. So that's exciting to see how, how that comes along. I guess one final question on the, the big stadium lighting. How positional are those so that we're not, you know, potentially inhibiting things in the neighborhood that's right there?
Jonathan, I'll, I'll take a shot at this, but Dr. Rush, it's a great question. What we have or what we utilize currently are what we call high-pressure sodium lighting systems. And they tend to be, they tend to spill a lot outside of the stadium and into the neighborhoods around. What we plan to use is the latest in stadium lighting and LED lighting for this stadium, which allows us to bring the light directly down to the field and into the bleachers. And the LED lighting is far more directional than what we experience currently with our, our current lighting systems. And so virtually, it's, it's quite interesting if you've driven by the latest project that we've completed at Workman Junior High School, the project that we performed in conjunction with the Cowboys and NFL. On a game night, when those lights are turned on, it's, it's almost like you see a line drawn from the, from the back of the pole onto the field. And it literally is dark one side and light the other. So LED lighting gives us a lot of flexibility, but it gives us great directional lighting capabilities and it avoids spillage into the neighborhood surrounding.
That's exactly what I would say. The directionality and the shielding of the LED fixtures is light years ahead of what we used to put up. So like Kelly said, you'll almost see a demarcation quite literally where the field is lit. And the city has ordinances on light trespass past our property lines. Obviously, we'll comply with that, but the LED is making it much easier to keep that containment within the field of light.
That's great. That's great. And I would hope that the, the city's code and standards have, have been updated to reflect what is available in lighting technology now versus maybe what's been on the books for a number of years to reflect more of the old incandescent type structures that would cause a lot more impedance into a neighborhood versus what these are. So that's great. That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Dr. Rush. And I can just say, as one of the committee members, myself, Ms. President Mays and Mr. Wilbanks, as we ask these, and I'll still say to these gentlemen, I was pretty adamant in pushing a lot of questions around not having a track. And they came back with some responses. We even looked at some of those. And the cost increase and what it does, does make it difficult. And we, there's not as much gain as what we would hope. And I also commend these gentlemen. We had some look at where the scoreboard will be so that when you're pulling up, you can see that. Also from light signage, to be able to see that so that it does feel like a home field for whichever team. And even from junior highs that are coming to play there in their games, you can create some of those lighting from where it is happening and what's going. If you saw on the north side of the property, there's a big student play area. Encourage that, to almost even expand that and make that as large as possible because that is a, a very sought-after thing that people like at games of parents being able to have younger kids be there and be able to play and participate in that together. So I think, you know, I, do we have enough AISD signage? Do we have enough digital signage? How can we use this? I even asked the question of, do you do RGB lights for the big lights? And the cost increase of those, but we have enough RGB at other places. But these LED lights are on-off fast, they help with that. We even spoke with, from the city with Kelly of, hey, how do we make sure the neighbors behind that understand what we're doing on the lighting to get some of those lighting ordinances to push in? And it's not old traditional lights that bleed a lot of light everywhere. And LED, you don't have to leave them on and let them power up for two hours, you know? They go on and off and when a game's over, you can kill them pretty quick and pretty digitally from, from that standpoint. So while I would still sit there and say I probably don't love the track because the idea was to build a track on the grass field so that then track and things come about, you gain some, but also there was a substantial cost increase with that. So I, I can amend some things and sometimes those come around and that happens. You know, we always know, you don't always get what you think. But luckily, we explored it and took some, some deeper dive into what it is. I think we've come about with a really strong design, one that's very flexible for the district to be able to utilize across the board for our use. We always say how our facilities get used all the time. This is a facility that helps us get used all the time with some reasonable expectations. Because I can tell you, if it was a small increase, I probably would have had a lot more discussions. But Kelly did a good job scaring me off with the total price of what the change and increase would be. So I commend these on this. We will have some further discussion as they push and some items that they'll be finalizing. And as we know, this is schematic design, but this is our speak now, forever hold your peace piece of the overall design and final designs will be coming with much, much more detail. With that, I don't see any other questions from colleagues. Mr. Wilbanks?
I do have a few questions, Mr. Hogg.
Okay, go right ahead.
So first of all, I want to commend you guys at V L K. You had a lot of constraints on this property and you nailed a really good design. You're very sensitive to the fact that it's got to be shared. And I'm excited about all the opportunities for using environmental graphics and LED lights and electronics so that we can easily swap out the livery for either Seguin or Martin to make it their own and really brand it with each school's livery. Few questions, though. I noticed if you look at, well, like one of the, the first slide, we'll start there. You can pull that up. The next one. The bird's eye view. Yeah. So as a parent of a Martin Warrior who used that back parking lot by the tennis courts for easy drop-off to avoid traffic, that's now going to be the main area where all of our visitors from out of town are going to be coming. And currently, that parking lot's not anything nice to look at. And then we just want to make sure you show some enhancement to the hardscape and to the, you know, using the hardscape and landscaping around those tennis courts in that plaza to do kind of wayfinding and direct the traffic flow. So just want to make sure there is budget and this isn't just a nice schematic design, that we will be putting some thought into how to dress up. That whole parking lot area, kind of in that U-shaped area between the building and the tennis courts and then directing traffic into what's essentially going to be the visitors' plaza. So I'll let the architect speak and then I'll let Kelly give the pragmatic answer.
So I'll promise everything and Kelly will say we can't afford it. Now, that, that has been a topic of discussion. And as you know, there's actually a portable building or two here now. And so Kelly can speak to that. But that's part of the improvement of that area is being able to remove that. And then we have started concepting kind of the, as you said, it needs to be a hardscape and a landscape connection that really pulls you to the field. I don't know how much of the, I agree with you on the parking. There's not much to look at with parking. So really, the goal would be to really pull your eye and your feet toward that entry plaza. So we don't disagree. And as we go a little bit further in documents, I think you'll see more progression there.
And I would agree. That was a focus, Mr. Wilbanks, that we had is to dress that up. And so there is a portable over there, there's an old greenhouse and some C containers. All of that will go away and we'll reinvent that area. And then, and so that it does look much nicer. And we have, also, we have money in the project for additional parking improvements. And that particular area is a focus for us to rework some of the paving over there so that it looks nicer. We don't have asphalt paving, but we have concrete paving to carry us into the stadium as Jonathan mentioned.
Yeah, we would, wouldn't want to miss the opportunity, as I think my colleague, Mr. Hogg, said when we had our committee meeting, of really showing AISD in the best light to those visitors and maybe stealing a few of our neighboring students to come and transfer to AISD because it looks so nice. But yeah, no, that was one of my main concerns is, you know, what the, you know, there's oftentimes a difference between these nice pictures that we get to see from the architects and those finishing touches depending on budget and, and other more pragmatic issues. But no, I appreciate that and I appreciate a lot of thought has gone into that. I also really, you know, want to point out that I think the thing that's going to set this apart and help sell it to the neighbors behind is the cladding with that kind of industrial-looking design to wrap those bleachers and make them look a lot more attractive. Also adding the ability to splash those with colored LED lights for the branding in, of each school to help make that, those home stands unique to either Seguin or Martin. And I would hope that would stay in the budget. I really like what you guys have done, a lot of the attention and detail to the press box area. I know that was a hard part of the design. But having that plaza area underneath for people to get up and stretch their legs. I'm one of those guys who had trouble sitting the whole time through a football game when it was always finding excuses to get up and roam around and visit with other parents. But having that area is, is great and also the hospitality areas that you built in. My other concern is the, can you pull up and just review the concession stand area for the visitors? Again, like if you look at...
I've got a little bit of a bird's eye view of the, of the site that shows all of the concessions and so forth up right now. Mr. Wilbanks?
Okay. So that back end is the home field locker. So the concession is for the visitors would be right where that visitor gate is, correct?
You have one current, there'll be two of them. There'll be one at the, what would be the, the northeast corner. And then there'll be another one at the southeast corner where the main visitor gate is. And so that way, as Jonathan and Josh mentioned earlier, we can split that, the restrooms and concessions up to provide more comfort and more convenience for both the visitor and the home sites.
I know in our committee meeting, one of our colleagues had questioned maybe making the kid area bigger. There's also that concession area kind of on the west side next to the kid area. Do we anticipate really needing that many concession stands? I know from going to high school football games over the years that, you know, at Lamar and some of other places, the one tends to not really be that busy. Unless, you know, being Martin, we anticipate a lot more volume here. I was just wondering if, if we can eliminate, and I know Mr. Hogg asked this question earlier, if that whole building is even necessary if we looked at consolidating that.
I think I'll take a stab at answering it first and then maybe Jonathan can pick up if I missed something here. The, what's driving us there, the concessions with, with the larger count that we have, almost 5,500 on the home side and 4,500 on the visitor side. You're right, this is a larger stadium than we currently have by almost 2,000 seats. And so a lot of what's driving that is, is the need for the increased restroom count and we need to split those up for convenience. And so they're closer so that someone on the far north end is not having to walk all the way to the south to go to a restroom and wait in line. And so they're closer so that someone on the far north end is not having to walk all the way to the south to go to a restroom and wait in line. And then the concessions are actually rather small. These are probably a 10 by 15 square foot, probably a 10 by 15 foot space. And more for convenience, the plumbing's there, the, it's a relatively small cost to add the concession to that already useful restroom bank. And in the kid area, while we have it there and we show it as, is a little larger than that restroom and concession building. We've reserved that space both really for if the city requires us to increase our restroom count beyond the variance that we're going to ask for. We would have to have that space to do that. But if not, then we have a rather generous area for the children to play or stretch their legs and run off some of that nervous energy.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I had forgotten that this is significantly different in terms of capacity so that it'd be a playoff field. So that makes a lot of sense. And those, you're right, those actual concession stands at each location do look smaller than the ones I remember working in the booster clubs. So with that said, Mr. Hogg, I don't know if there's any more questions and if, go ahead.
Right at time, no, I'm just kidding, go right ahead.
It's a real easy question. In our bond, we have a part of a, an opportunity where we're going to give a band their own trailer with their own branding on it and that sort of thing. It's like a tractor trailer.
Yes.
And are roads around this going to be able to accommodate something like that?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. In fact, they, like I said, the road, the road that goes around the back of the home side is a regulation fire lane width so that we can get any size fire truck that the City of Arlington might have. And those are typically larger and wider than any trailer that we might have. So I'm very confident that we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Wil.
Ms. Fowler?
President Hogg, as a neighbor to Martin High School, I live in that area just west of the student parking lot and where the band practices. So I do appreciate what I'm hearing tonight about the traffic to kind of ease the areas around there. And I'm very pleased to know that my neighbors will not have to be buying blackout curtains. That we're going to have some lighting that's going to work, so I definitely appreciate that. Also, when we talked about repaving, I guess that would be the east parking lot. You know, Martin and I guess some of the other schools also, but Martin has a tradition where the seniors get to paint their parking spaces. So I want to make sure that we don't mess any of that up and that the students will have access and be able to paint their spots and let that continue to be a tradition. So maybe just kind of keep that in mind.
Absolutely, and we won't disturb that at all while it, while it'll be reserved for visitor parking on those game nights. It won't be a reserved visitor parking. So they'll just find a spot and if it happens to be Suzie Jones' spot or whoever's, that's just where they want. So they can still do that, absolutely.
But thank you for all these accommodations that you're making to the neighborhood because we want to be good neighbors and we appreciate all the thought going into that. So thank you.
And Ms. Fowler, I think there's some discussion of even walking the neighborhood behind there, the stadium, to let them know and see what we're doing to take into account.
That'd be wonderful.
Dr. Reich?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify again on those concession stands or buildings. So you said each of those are 10 by 15, so 150 feet, that's it?
I'm just taking a stab at it, Dr. Reich. I'd had to get the actual size, but they're not, they're not, they're not such that we would be, we would have to have grease traps and things like that. We're not really serving anything other than pre-prepared foods. So I can get the actual size, but I was taking a stab just by looking at them.
Okay, yeah, I was just, I don't know, focusing in on that, thinking about our existing concessions that we have, like at Cravens as an example. And it seems to me that's a lot bigger, that probably does have a larger area for actual food prep. So that's certainly something. But aside from that, when we're in there as boosters and P T A, we're on top of each other. So I'd want to make sure that there's still adequate space, even if there isn't a grease trap and food prep. So just to make sure that that's already been vetted before we lock this into our design.
Okay, we'll verify that for you, yes, sir.
Yeah, we've used both of those stadiums as a point of comparison, so I'm glad you're bringing that up. We'll go double check and make sure, because the last thing we want to do, to your point, is undersized concessions. That's, most people who build a stadium, they don't ever regret the number of restrooms because frankly code makes you have so many you can't. But they do regret if they don't get the concessions signed correctly, so we'll be sensitive to that and just do a double check for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilbanks?
With that, I move adoption of the plans as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Wilbanks, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wilbanks and a second by Ms. Fowler. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Wilbanks?
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Holly Walton, I vote yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Booby Hogg, I vote yes. Motion passes and approved. Thank you, gentlemen, for all the work on that and extensive discussion. Next, we will, let me get to my agenda. Next, we will move to discussion action items. And with that, we have reopening schools 2021. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And tonight we bring, as in every board meeting that we've had over the last several months, we bring an update on how we're doing with COVID response and implementation of different changes. And so tonight we bring an update to the board with a particular focus on COVID testing opportunity that Texas Education Agency is providing school districts. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Brown, who will include updates to our school implementation. Dr. Brown?
Good evening, Vice President Hogg, members of the board and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you again, of course, for the opportunity to present our return to school update for you this evening. So our focus today, we'll do a brief enrollment update as well as share A I S D and Tarrant County COVID data. And then as Dr. Cavassos referenced, spend some time talking about A I S D COVID, A I S D's COVID testing plan presented by our Coordinator of Health Services, Annette Minterly. So as always, we do begin with our A I S D guiding principles. And so of course flexibility and grace being the cornerstone of all that we're doing and we have been doing over the last several months. Offering that, of course, and asking for that in return. Educational equity, making sure all of our students have access to resources and rigorous learning, whether it's in person or it is virtual learning. Prioritizing the health and safety of all of our students and our staff members as well. And of course, engaging our stakeholders and getting input from them as we continue to make decisions for our district. So our operation registration update, we have about 57,128 students who are enrolled and we are at about 96.5% of our projected enrollment. Of course, we continue to monitor these numbers daily and continue to have our arms wide open for students who are willing and interested in coming to our district. So just a very brief update on in-person learning as relates to, in-person learning as relates to our high school hybrid. So as you're aware, since September 28th, our high school students have been engaged in hybrid learning where they have attended school at least two, sometimes three days per week. And one of the reasons why we opted for that was to allow, of course, for social distancing and to be able to have a transition back to in-person learning. And so I wanted to share with you all today that we are exploring the possibility of transitioning to daily in-person instruction for our high school students, for those who have chosen in-person instruction. As a part of this exploration, we continue to, of course, get feedback, get input and to just evaluate our systems and how we are engaging in instruction in our district. And so we spent some time with our high school principals, just really having a brainstorm, a brain dump, ideas, thoughts, pros and cons of transitioning to in-person learning five days a week. As you recall, may recall, we do have our special education students who have been attending in-person learning five days a week as well as some high school principals who allow for specific students by request in their space in the classroom to be able to attend, of course, every day. And so now our principals are in the process of talking to teachers, really being able to engage focus groups of teachers on their campus and asking them the very similar questions they were asked. What are some pros to us transitioning to in-person and learning? What are some cons to us considering that? And then just really being able to look at all that information and have a conversation with our cabinet. So right now, of course, we are just exploring that as an option. There's no specific timeline that we have outlined for that, we're just in the exploration phase right now. So as relates to health and safety, I'll spend just a little bit of time talking about our current data and looking at Tarrant County metrics for safer in-person instruction. We, of course, share these during every board meeting. One of the metrics being the seven day moving average being less than 10%. Of course, ideally less than 5%, which we've talked about previously. The rate of cases being less than 2,000 cases per week, four weeks of data showing stable or declining case counts. And then, of course, also looking at our COVID-like illnesses data that were trending lower for the last two weeks. And the final part of that is the percent of hospital beds occupied by Tarrant County, in Tarrant County by COVID patients being below 10%. So as usual, we will share that data with you that, of course, is visible to the public on the Tarrant County data dashboard. So right now, our seven day moving positivity rate is at about 11% and that is as of October 31st. And so the last several weeks, we have been hovering between 11 and 12% mainly. As relates to cases per week, we are at the end of October 31st at 4,400, over 4,400 cases. Our COVID-like illness seven day moving average is at 3.7 and you can see the trends of that data over the last few weeks. And then our COVID hospitalizations being at about 11%, again hovering around 7 to 11% over the last few weeks. As relates to our A I S D COVID data, just wanted to share some new information with you. Currently, we have about 181 staff members who are currently under quarantine. Of those 181, 32 of them were quarantined due to work exposure. And currently, we do have 686 students who are currently under quarantine as well. Our data dashboard for Arlington I S D is updated right now, it's updated weekly. And so just wanted to share that we have 22 active staff cases right now. And again, we have 48 active student cases. That data is available, it's public facing and we do update that every week. And it also provides the information by school so that anyone in our community can access that at any time. We also started sharing with you our self-reporting cases and how they've looked by month. And so now that we've ended October, we had 500, almost 600 self-reporting cases. And so far, at the beginning of November, we've had 54. Again, we monitor those daily for staff members who are reporting whether they have symptoms, there may be possible exposure, or they have tested positive for COVID-19. So now I'm actually going to turn it over to Annette Minterly, who is our Coordinator of Health Services. And she's going to share some information about A I S D COVID-19 rapid testing and share with you our process and our plan.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. The T E A and Department of State Health Services for Texas have arranged for us to have rapid tests available for our students and staff who have symptoms of illness. These are our folks that are, have to be presumed to potentially have COVID. And so the purpose of having a rapid test is so that we can isolate them and begin our contact tracing as early as possible so that we can try to reduce the spread of the illness within our campuses. So the test is the Abbott Binax Now test and it's a simpler test than the PCR test that early on in COVID, you saw everybody doing the sort of brain tickler deep test. And this one is a simpler test than that and it's, why you get the result in 15 minutes. It's an antigen test, it's about the size of a credit card and you just use a little nasal swab and you only have to go up about an inch deep on an adult and get a little nasal swab on each side and then insert it in the card and put a free agent on it and you can run your test that way. So we'll, in compliance with the T E A guidelines, you can only use this test for district employees and/or students who are participating in face-to-face instruction. The test has to be optional, we can't require anyone to take the test. We will have to get a formal consent from the students guardian for the students that are minors and anyone that's 18 and older, both the staff or some of our older students can sign their own consent and there'll be no charge to either the student, their parent, or the staff for being tested. So we'll use a targeted response and only test individuals who are symptomatic so that we can see what their test result is and then advise them what their next step should be. This test is, we won't be using it for randomized screening, it's really not accurate in that situation and that's an off-label use. The test is really intended to be used in individuals that do have symptoms. So you can't use a negative test instead of having safety protocols and you can't use a negative test to change your contact isolation or to get out of your, whatever isolation you've been assigned to based on whether you're positive and ill or you're a contact of an ill person. So for example, if you have a 14-day isolation, you have a 14-day isolation. You can't get a negative test using this test halfway through and shorten up that isolation period. So we would start in a phased plan where our first phase would be symptomatic staff on workdays. And also if they had household members who were also an employee, we're finding that a number of times, both adults in the household work for the district and one of them is sick and so the other one can't come to work either. And if we could determine that the one probably didn't have COVID, then the one who wasn't ill would be able to go ahead and come on to work. And we have a similar situation with our students. So our second phase would be to start screening or testing our symptomatic in-person students. And if they have siblings in the household that currently also have to stay home, when that's, when that ill sibling is ill, we would, if we could determine that they probably don't have COVID, then they would still potentially have to stay home depending on what their symptoms were. But the other siblings in the house would be able to go ahead and go on back to school. So for staff, it would be just a drive-up testing. They would show us their Qualtrics app that they were not approved and then we would do their test. And then if, in the event that they were positive, we'd contact the campus nurse so that she could go ahead and start the contact tracing that might be needed. And then as we moved into the staff and student phase two, at that point, then the campus nurse would give the student a referral to the clinic. And then the clinic would call them and set up their appointment and the campus nurse again would be notified if the test came back positive so that the contact tracing process could get started on the campus. So we'll take any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Minterly, thank you for that. Let me open it up to colleagues for any questions.
Vice President Hogg?
Yeah, Ms. Fowler?
Thank you. Is there a limit in the number of times that they can be tested?
There wouldn't be a limit, but they do have to be symptomatic. So it's not a situation where we would test them, you know, every single day or once a week or on a schedule. It would be an as-needed basis based on their symptoms.
Thank you.
And Ms. Fowler asked that question, you know, talking to Dr. Cavassos. It's also voluntary. It's, you know, no one's required to do this. We see some other districts that are possibly spreading it out or it's voluntary, it's from that look and it's also from a, I want to say a recommendation, but from guidance from one of our health professionals. We are a district that has the, I guess, made the smart decision to continue to have nurses at every one of our campuses. It would say, it's a large financial commitment that we committed to many years ago on the importance for our schools. And so having Ms. Minterly lead that team and that, being able to advise that for those, I do think that is an important factor for what will occur with that. And it'll also be performed by medical professionals to be able to do that. Even though I think, I don't know if these tests, but some of them now are coming out where it's. to be able to do that, even though I think, I don't know if these tests, but some of them now are coming out where it's self-administered. And you can do it yourself. I think they they've definitely advanced in their testing procedures to get to where we're going with COVID on this.
Vice President Hogg, could I also add that today at our Arlington Rotary Meeting, our guest was the Fire Chief, Chief Don Croson. And he was very complimentary of AISD. And he said that he works with a lot of different school districts and talking about COVID and and reporting and all of that. And he said ultimately that AISD is doing it right. And he was very complimentary of the job we're doing with with COVID.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Other questions from colleagues? Ms. Walton, I saw you had one. Yeah.
What?
I saw you looking at me. Go right ahead, Ms. Walton.
Just a couple of clarifications. So we will not be testing at every campus. There will be just one kind of central location to go where you would get, be able to do the testing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And do we have any kind of a timeline on when we hope to maybe begin implementing this?
At this moment, I really don't. As quickly as we can get things set up, we've we've submitted the initial documents that need to be submitted to the state to request the test. And so they'll be getting back to us as far as when our tests will arrive. And then there's a certain amount of equipment that needs to be gathered in order to to equip the clinic and be ready to go. And we're already in the process of training the staff that will be administering the tests. They've already started that training process so that when our tests get here and and we're set up, we'll be ready to start.
Thank you. I think this is well planned out. Thank you.
And Ms. Walton, in some of my earlier discussions, it's also doing that, because there can be long waits at some of the testing that's provided. And so by having this, it is not just you want to go get tested, you're tested. You show symptoms or some indicator that we would say you can. And then it's a very short, convenient test for our staff, for our staff or our, the students to be done if they choose to have that test done. So perfect. Any other questions from colleagues? Nope, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
I've met my limit, right? And and who are the trained personnel that will be, where did they come from? Are they our school nurses or who are the people that will be administering the test?
We're going to utilize our our resource nurses, and there are three nurses that don't typically have a campus assignment. They move around the district. And we also have three traveling clinic assistants that don't have a fixed assignment. And so they won't all six be at the clinic all the time because we don't want to pull all of that away from the support that they normally provide to the district. But they'll work on a rotating basis at the clinic in order to to help us out with the process.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Minnery.
Good question, Ms. Fowler. I know you were just making sure it wasn't me. Perfect. Any other questions for colleagues? With that, we will move to the next item. Thank you, team. Always weird seeing it on video. Next, we'll move to item C, discussion item, consider motions necessary addressing new guidelines. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg, and we do not have any motions to consider under that item tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Next item on the agenda is consent. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda by my colleagues? I am not seeing one. Tonight, we'll be considering items listed on the agenda under consent items. Ms. Moss, if you are there, please share bids with us. There you are. Hi, Ms. Moss.
Hi, how are you? Thank you, Vice President Hogg.
Hold on a second, Ms. Moss. We're having a little hard time hearing you.
Okay, let's see. Is that better?
That sounds much better, Ms. Moss. Please go right ahead.
Okay, so tonight, we have three items from the consent items that we'll highlight for you. We have four bids that we're bringing to you for your consideration. We have three purchases that exceed that threshold of $50,000. And we have donations for this past month of $42,058. And our year-to-date donations are $326,637. And we bring those to you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Moss, and thank you to all of our donations. You know, we cannot run a school district without community members helping and supporting and constantly doing that. So we always have to take a moment to thank them. With that, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Want a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I have a motion by Ms. Fowler. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Y'all were close, but I'm going to give it to Dr. Rush. I have a motion by Ms. Fowler and a second by Dr. Rush for the consent agenda. This is, since this meeting is being conducted virtually, kind of in person, our vote will be a roll-call vote. Please state your name and either vote yes or no if in favor of the motion, no if you're not in favor. Dr. Rush.
Aaron Rush, I vote yes.
Doc, Dr. Wilbanks. You just got a title. Way to go, Dr. Wilbanks. You got your PhD. It's an honorary one, so it doesn't really count. Go ahead, Mr. Wilbanks.
I like the way that sounds. Although I think my daughter is actually in a beat me to that title. So David Wilbanks, not Dr. Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Holly Walton, I vote yes.
I'm just going to go everyone. Dr. Walton, Dr. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
I think you really are a doctor. You're a doctor. Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
There's no way I'm a doctor. So Booyahog, I vote yes. We have approved the motion in a consent agenda. Next, we have open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board for non-agenda items? There you go.
There we go. No, sir, we don't have any requesters for non-agenda items, and our guest that registered for the agenda items has not clicked in.
Thank you for that reminder. Ms. Benjamin, thank you so much, and thank you especially for all you do. I know these meetings take a lot, and we're greatly appreciative for that. Next, we move into superintendent's report. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And every time I get an opportunity, I thank staff. But I do want to highlight our custodial staff, our maintenance and operations staff, and our food service staff in particular tonight because of their efforts and their work constantly throughout the the whole, since March, actually, under this situation, very challenging and implementation of protocols and keeping everyone safe in in the facilities and things like that. I just want to thank them. They're they're an outstanding group of of our maintenance workers, our custodians, our food services. And then also, a quick thank you to Annette Minnery for her continued diligence. And Ms. Fowler, that compliment from the chief is also resonates and has been duplicated as a compliment by our county as well that our health services has set a gold standard for contact tracing and reporting and helping mitigate the spread of COVID. So thank you to Annette Minnery for her leadership and effort. So with that, that's my report tonight, Ms. Hogg.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Thank you. While you're thanking everyone else, let me thank you for all you do. In this unprecedented times, it's your nights are already long, and I know they've been even longer during all this. So thank you for all your work. Next, we'll move to school board reports. Any school board reports?
I'd like to applaud.
Yeah, always welcome applause. Go ahead, Ms. Fowler.
All right. So this is for parents to know and students to know. There's a new opportunity for tutoring. And this is a group of retired AISD teachers. And this is a nonprofit, so they're not-for-profit. They're a nonprofit organization that's formed, and they're called Excel Learning Academy. And they are tutoring in everything you can imagine. STEM, foreign language, English, speech therapy, dyslexic tutoring, everything. But these teachers are wonderful, and they'll they'll do tutoring one-on-one. But they also offer any of the students that are doing virtual learning. If you will bring your AISD technology with you in your assignments, they will work with you at their location so that you don't have to stay home by yourself necessarily. So they're located there on Little Road, so it's convenient for everyone. But you can look at excellearning.academy for their information. And if any of you know Rinthia Clements, she's a retired English teacher from Martin, and she is phenomenal. She's the director of the program. So they do tutoring in all subjects, and they're ready to help the students. And and parents to know that virtual learning, if your student is having difficulty, send them to Excel Learning Academy, and I think it'll make a difference. I'll have it posted on my social media.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler.
Yes, all ages.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Ms. Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
I believe so. We had one request of Mr. Horn to please check and verify the size of the concession stands at Glassby Field and to get back to the committee, I believe, about that.
We'll send it out.
Or us.
We'll send it out.
Yeah, that'll be sent out to the whole board to make their sure for anything else? That's it?
I believe that's all. Somebody else?
With that, it is, I'm having a hard time telling time now, 8:35 PM, and this meeting is adjourned.